Good evening, West Orange. It is September 20th, 2016, and welcome to our West Orange Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you get us started, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger in the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellina?
Present.
Councilwoman Gorino?
Present.
Councilman Krokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to get started with a special presentation today, and I see rosary in the audience. We have Dana Roan here today. The Honorable Dana Roan, thank you for your efforts, Madam Clerk. Thank you for following up. And Honorable Dana Roan, thank you very much for being here. She is the Essex County Register of Deeds and Mortgages for us, representing us at the county building. We've talked about in the past, senior citizens, senior citizens that own homes, they register deeds with this office, and as you know, that can become a public record. Once a deed is recorded, once you purchase a home and a deed is recorded with the county, it can become a public record, which means it can possibly, and I use these vague terms because Dana's here to really enlighten us on how it really works, but the concern is that it can be possibly be obtained by third parties, these legal documents, or manipulated in any way by the access of a public document, or as a public document. So Dana, thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you can cover this topic for us, as well as some other topics, and some of the, you're going to share with us some of the hard work that you do over at the county building.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to West Orange.
You did a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. So, good evening. I am Dana Roan, the Essex County Register of Deeds and Mortgages, and what we decided to do, I was elected to serve in November 2014, began my service in January 2015. So I've been there a little over a year, going on my second year. We decided to do this roadshow because many people in our county do not really understand what the service is that the Office of Deeds and Mortgages provide. So, we are the office that does all the recording for all 22 municipalities within the county, anything that has to do with land, all your property, public and private. And so, all the deeds are stored there. We are an archive. If you have not been to the office, you should come to the office. So, the Office of Registers and Deed, we generate over $50 million a year for the county. So it's a large office. We have 30 individuals who work for me. As of today, we are 22 percent increase in revenue from last year. We record about 1,500 documents a day. That's about 45,000 within the month. So it's an office that functions at high volume. When I first came aboard there, at the office, we were 32 weeks in arrears, in recording. We are now within 48-hour mandate of the New Jersey State Constitution. And so, it takes 48 hours to completely record your documents. This was a major problem upon my arrival. We have invested in staff development, over 1,000 hours in staff development and customer service training. It's important that when you come to our office, that you receive the best service. We trained our workers to understand all the documents that run through our office, from mortgages, deeds, IRS liens, tax cell certificates, redemptions. These things are highly important and time-sensitive, and so it's important to process these within the legal mandate of 48 hours. I guess, I believe it was March, we had a newspaper article that came out in Star Ledger, where a gentleman stole a church. He came down to the office and he recorded a fraudulent deed. What you have to keep in mind is that the Open Public Record Act opens your public documents not only to you, but to the entire public. And so people visit our office, and what's unfortunate is that our seniors in our county have become prey to scammers. And so it's highly important that you pay attention to your deed. And so I'm going to explain that. But it came out in the paper, he came, he recorded a fraudulent deed, and when you keep in mind that everything is fraudulent. The attorney on the document is fraudulent, your signatures are fraudulent, and so because we are not required to alert our homeowners here in the county, there is no requirement, no criteria, no mandate, that the true homeowner is alerted when these things happen. So, when the pastor found out it happened, some time had lapsed, and he had to spend $8,000 in order to get his church back. And so, it impacts the true owner. And so this is very important, because in our senior population, sometimes they don't have the funds to fight, sometimes they don't know how to fight in order to basically claim something that is their own. And so, it's important, again, that you come, you visit the office, you check on your deed. Most people don't realize that it's not like a car, it's not a title. Your deed is the first, you receive this at your closing, you have a deed before you have a mortgage. Most people pay attention to their mortgage because it's something that you do on a daily basis, you do it every month. Your deed is housed in an open public records room in the Public Law at my office for public view. That means that I can get your deed, you can get her deed, you can get his deed. And so, it is open, and you have to, the only way to decrease your risk of fraud is to do your due diligence and check on your deed. Our office is open from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and we are there to direct you and to serve you. There is another type of fraudulent activity going on, and I guess I can't say fraudulent, but it's very misleading. Third parties Oprah our office, ask for all of our records, and then they solicit you to secure a certified deed of your home. Your taxpayer dollars already provide that for you at a reduced cost of less than $25, but these letters would say that you can receive a certified deed to your home for $79.99. And so what happens is that, then you secure that with this third party, as the Council President was explaining, you secure it, and then they Oprah us again for your certified deed. So they pay us the $25, and then they have $50 off of you because they did what you could do, and it's just from lack of knowledge. So the only way to secure your property is to participate in the process and to check on your deed and your mortgage. You may have a lien on your home. If you've never checked, you wouldn't know. We went through this process, we took Assemblywoman Sheila Oliver on a tour of our office. She has since submitted a bill to the Assembly. It's called the Owner Protection Act. This bill would allow our office to send you an immediate notice as soon as there is activity on your deed. So should any fraudulent activity happen, in three to five days, you would know it. So you would receive a notice that such acts and you have had activity on your deed. And so know, if you know, if you've been there in our office, then this is something that you have done. And if you haven't, it's something that you should check immediately. And so we've been working diligently to make sure and to ensure that taxpayers in this county understand how they can help themselves and how to decrease fraud. And so we've been going from municipality to municipality, doing what we call the roadshow and educating our community on how and the things that would help and be helpful. So if you don't have a, sort of, if you don't have the original copy of your deed in your home, you should secure a certified deed. A certified deed is a deed with a seal on it, my seal on it, with my original signature, it is the true copy then, if you cannot find the original deed. You should have this, you should have it in a secured place, and you should always have a second one, so you can give it to someone that you trust in your family. It is the most valuable asset in your life. You should pay very attention to it and be proactive in securing your property. So the Council President sent me a question. He wanted to make sure that I addressed the fraud issue in the county, and so he asked me, his question was, how, let me, I know I have it here. He said, "I was wondering if it's possible that you can safeguard our senior citizens." And so, and he wanted to make sure that I came with the information and the tools to help you make sure that you have no liens on your property that you don't know about, that your property is secured in your name, as it should be, and so these are the things that you need to do. Our office is open, it is really, it's a delight. You will guarantee you the best customer service experience you've ever had in public government. I'm proud of that, and I'm proud, I'm very proud of the customer service that you receive because people in government, we think that, you know, we prepare ourselves sometime when we go to public places. We bring the book, we have a prayer, we say something, good quote, before we walk in, and we hope that we have a good experience. Often, it doesn't go the way it should. And so it has been very important to me to ensure that we receive and you receive the highest customer service. It's important, and I think that that's what your taxpayer dollars pay for, and we want to provide you with the best service. So if you have any questions at this time, I'll be glad to take them. Sharon, did I cover everything? The blue sheet, okay, okay. The blue sheet, okay. To safeguard our senior citizens is okay, several steps. Make sure you have original deed in your home, or a certified deed that you can obtain in the Register's office for under $25. Do not sign papers without seeking legal counsel or a trustworthy friend. And every two years, you should make it down, and make it a practice, to make it down to the Register's office to check on your deed.
Yes?
Council President, can I ask a question? So, just when you say certified, is that with the book and page, I work for a title company, book and page number, so the audience understands that?
Yes. Well, the Essex County Register's office is the first office in the state of New Jersey who no longer uses book and page.
Okay.
So we have now, book and page in Essex County is a physical book and a physical page. At one time, we scripted into the book. At other times, we copied it into the book. And so now, it is in the clouds, and so you have an instrument number, so just so you know. But yes, it does have that, it's your original deed. We, our office only works with the original, so this is how it goes. At your closing, you usually don't get the paperwork. The attorney sends it to our office with your original signatures, it comes in, we image it, so we image the original documents, and then it goes into, recorded and goes into public, into the public law.
And congratulations for getting online, because I know that's been a major undertaking in Essex County, so.
We have a lot more to do. Right now, we are, when you say online, you can't search online, but you can record online. And so we are starting a new project in 2017 for the next 10 years. So from '89 to '99, we are digitizing, taking it from book frame to interdigital, so that we can prepare to put 30 years on in 2018.
Great job, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Yes.
Welcome, thank you, Ms. Roan. I have two questions. One, is there a resolution that we as a council can issue to support Sheila Oliver's Owner Protection Act? Is there something that we could do? Do you have a model resolution?
I'm sure. When I was in East Orange, that council passed a resolution in support of it, so I'm sure that you could draft something.
Okay, look at a copy.
Yes.
Great. And my other question was, is there a newsletter or booklet, something that your office can provide, that we can distribute to our residents?
So yes, so I, so yes.
Speak and you shall receive.
I packaged, I made a package. It's only 25 in there, but we have more for you if you need it. I wanted to make sure that, you know, you had something to hand out to your constituents, to your neighbors, and that's it. We also have a public notice that went out in the paper several times in reference to the high rise of fraud and what you can do. So we have some of those too that you can take with you, and so.
Is it in legal ease, or is it something that people can pick up the newspaper and understand what it says?
Well, see, that's the whole thing. We put it in public notice, and usually people don't read the notices. And so that's why I do it, I do a lot of hard copy handouts. And we do local newspapers. So if there's a local newspaper that you know that you can suggest to us as to who does it, we put it in those local newspapers.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you much.
Okay, well that means I did a pretty good job up here.
Thank you, thank you again. We're excited to have you, very informative. This booklet is great. It has rates. If somebody wants to go to the hall of records, it's Room 130.
It is, that's correct.
Room 130. Okay, between the hours of 8:30 and 4:30, go check out the documents that are registered with your property. And hopefully, we've been able to provide quality feedback for our residents at home. It's being broadcast, it's starting on Thursday, so I hope that our residents tune in and they get all this information, yes.
It is a very good document, and thank you for a great presentation. Is this document available online, I mean through your website?
Yes, I believe it is. I know our newsletter is up, and if that's not up, it will be up. But we put our newsletters up online, you can get the free chart online, we have a full website.
Okay.
And you can sign up for the newsletter as well, okay?
Thank you so much.
Terrific. Thank you. I'm not sure, I know you guys got all of these.
Yes, thank you.
These are what we call mop heads. They're three-in-ones, they clean your phone, this is a little mouse in for you when it gets cold and you have on gloves and you can't type, you can, and it is a pen, so it's a three-in-one, so. Thank you.
I'm sure our seniors would love the tote bags in the audience, there you go.
Yeah, can I give them this too?
Thank you, Ms. Roan. And your entire team, I see you brought some staff.
We're going to continue with our conference meeting agenda, we're going to move on to council liaison announcements.
Council President?
Yes, Council.
I need to make a special presentation tonight.
You do.
Yes, I do.
Wait till they come.
Take a minute break, Councilman, we're going to take a minute break, and we will reconvene. Councilman Gorino?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Council President.
She's holding court.
All right, let's quiet down a little. We're going to continue with our meeting. Councilman Gorino?
Thank you, Council President, thank you to my council colleagues and members in the audience tonight. I just recently joined the joint meeting as the council representative, and it's an unbelievable organization. It's an unbelievable makeup of members from the 11 communities who belong to the joint meeting, and I thank my colleagues for appointing me to serve West Orange on the joint meeting. At my first meeting, it was very exciting, learned a lot about waste management, moving water and waste, very interesting, but they had a lot of kind words to say about Council President Victor Cirillo. And I won't go into the things they said about Council President Victor Cirillo, but they were sorry to see him go, they know he has other things that have taken his time, and they know he's left his position in good hands. So during the meeting, they made a presentation which they asked me to follow up here in council chambers, so tonight, I'd like to present this plaque from the membership of the joint meeting to Council President Victor Cirillo.
All right. Turn a little bit, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that was just a token of their esteem from the joint meeting to Victor for his years of service, and they're going to miss you, but they say, you know, "Come around for a pizza in the pre-meetings anytime." Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, and I'm sure you'll continue the hard work that's required of this entity. It's the entity that handles our wastewater collection and treatment. And it's a very big entity, and it costs a lot of money, and you know, it's, we have to be stewards and make sure that our share is being well-spent, and we've done, you know, we've done the best we can in the last few years, and I'm sure that Councilman Gorino is going to continue that legacy. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes?
Sure. I'm going to need more than five minutes, though, there's plenty. Starting with the planning board, on September 7th, our last planning board meeting, the corner of Central Avenue and Valley Road, the planning board has designated an area in need of redevelopment. This area has been monitored for a long time, this, we will look at, the planning board will look at this as the designated blocks and lot numbers along the Central Avenue and corridor. Hopefully, years ago, back in 2005, it was listed, we had the planning board listen to an application back then about creating a transit village because of its close proximity to the Highland Avenue Station. We have an approved plan already for the abandoned Harvard Press Building, so we're hoping to redevelop that area. On October 1st, I would like to extend the invitation, on October 1st, to the third annual, I know I have invitations here, the Third Annual Muckers Bowl. This is the Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park. The Muckers Bowl is on Saturday, October 1st, from 5:30 to 9 o'clock. The proceeds that are raised from this event go to conserve the actual time clock that Thomas Edison used, and all of his employees used. Edison referred to his workers, when he was working on an invention, he referred to his workers as muckers to work through the night, to complete his projects or his ideas, and he would get food from local sources. And we're doing the same. We have the Poorhouse, that will provide our signature cocktail, called Muckers Madness. We have Loretta's, The Manor, Bond's Tavern, ShopRite, Supreme Bakery, Dunkin' Donuts, Don Juan Restaurant, Benji's, and the Chamber and the West Orange Alliance are partnering with the Friends of Thomas Edison. So go to the, can go to our website, which is www.fofriendsofedison.org, to get more In keeping with the 100th anniversary of National Park Service, Luna Stage is putting on King of the Mountain. It was written by Ben Clausen, it starts on October 6th, it will run through October 30th, and it's a three-day, the story is three days of President Teddy Roosevelt and naturalist John Muir, that power struggle on what to do with public lands. So it's very timely. There's more information on the Luna Stage website, lunastage.org, that one's easy. This weekend is National Public Lands Day, the 23rd National Public Lands Day. Again, the Thomas Edison Museum is having a fee-free day, that's hard to say, but we are nationwide, having fee-free day on Saturday, September 24th. So the Labs will be open, the Edison Labs at 211 Main Street, also Edison's Home in Glenmont will be open from 10 to 5. There's also the Black Mariah will be, the Black Mariah, right on Main Street, will have a film festival that starts at 5 o'clock. Again, all of this is free, open to the public. The West Orange Arts Council, they will be celebrating their one-year anniversary in, at 551 Valley Road, for their gallery and gift shop, and there's so much information there at warts.org, they have workshops and a lot of information there. You're invited to check that out. I see people are here from the library, so I could talk about the big book sale, but I think we're going to have October 1st and 2nd on the book sale. Become a member and have a preview of the 20,000 books that the library is going to sell for $1, $2, I'm not going to say anymore. Anyone, I would like to also invite anyone to the Mayor's Program for Individuals with Special Needs, they meet monthly, and on October 26th, they're having a costume party. This is held at the Toby Katz Center. If anyone is interested, you can call, please call the coordinator, Lisa Adams, at 973-243-1169. And the Health Department, there are two, and the Record Department have two senior field trips coming up. One is the Oktoberfest trip, that is a field trip to Dooland's Shore Club in Spring Lake, that's on Thursday, October 13th. Tickets are available at Tier Town Hall, the number to call is 973-325-4105. Tickets are $47. And also there's a senior Halloween party, that's also at the Katz Community Center, that's $8, on October 28th, from 11:30 to 2:30.
Thank you very much. That senior citizen trip to Dooland, what's the date again?
October, sorry, October 13th, my birthday.
13th, thank you.
I just want to say also, with the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, the West Orange Environmental Commission, and the West Orange Open Space, we are setting aside October 20th, the evening of October 20th, to, for a group rate, to go to Luna Stage to see this King of the Mountains production. If anybody would like, please contact me or the clerk. If you would like information on a group rate to attend on October 20th.
20th?
October 20th.
And that's on land preservation, Theodore Roosevelt, turn of the century?
Yes, the power struggle on what to do with public land.
And before we continue, I do want to commend Luna Stage. They held a wonderful program this past week on Route 280. A lot of residents that have lived here for a long time remember the impact that that had on the communities along 280, and Luna Stage, the theater on Valley Road, held this special presentation along with video, a video on that initiative and that process. And before that, I recall, I also, I attended a session or a play on the energy wars, Tesla versus Edison.
ACDC.
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. On one thing I would say, I like, I'm glad to see a lot of the seniors here tonight, I had an ad hoc meeting with a lot of the seniors at the Rent a House last week, and it's good to see a lot of you here. I told you to come here and voice your opinions, we wanna hear you, and I'm glad that you are here tonight. Another note is, I've just been reached, outreach from the Livingston organization called Livingston 2020 Vision, who are very interested in copying our pedestrian safety ordinance and our documents that we've done in our complete streets. So they'll be arranging a meeting with us, because they wanna copy what we've done, because they need to catch up. And they were very impressed with the work that our board has done, and I thank my board members for the great work that's been accomplished. Also, we had a great jazz festival this weekend, huge turnout, great weather, a lot of local talent was there and sang, and everybody had a great time, and the vendors, all local vendors, the food was out of this world, and the merchandise, and everybody had a great time. I hope you can make it next year. It's a very good, you know, venue, the Ospac Center was just such a perfect venue for this, and everybody had a great time, oh, can't wait till next year. Also, with the excitement building on Main Street and everything else, to get interested in what's going on and to sign up for alerts, you should go to the Downtown West Orange Alliance website, and it's, the website is www.downtownwo.com. And residents can sign up there to get notices of new restaurants opening, businesses going on, all the synergy, synergy that's going on in the Main Street corridor, and this way you can be on top of what's going on with our events. Another thing that's happening this Sunday is the annual 5K Mayor's Race for the National Ovarian Cancer Society. And can you still sign up, Ms. Brill? Yeah, you can still sign up, and it's a great event, it's even come down and help us out on Sunday morning. We look forward to seeing all the people that come to our township to support this great cause. Another good thing that's happening is the manufacturer, Skechers, has designed a sneaker in the color particularly for this event. And proceeds from the sale of these sneakers are $6, and you can buy them at the event. The manufacturer will be at the 5K Run on Sunday, and proceeds from the sale of the sneaker will go towards cancer, you know, ovarian cancer research and foundation work. So it's a great thing, nice color, you know, it's, show your pride for national ovarian cancer. Other than that, I just, like I said, it's glad to see everybody here tonight, it's glad to use this forum, and, you know, please come up and speak your minds. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman, thank you very much. How much are the sneakers?
Six, uh, $6, Council President.
$6.
Oh, $60, you told me $6, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, it'd be a good deal. Well, you said, to me, this is $6, okay? This is $6. Thank you very much. The price has been corrected, it's $69.99.
Still a bargain.
It's still a bargain for Skechers. Skechers are a very good product, but it's a great, like I said, proceeds of the sale go to cancer research. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brill.
Now, you gotta take your sneakers off the table, it's bad luck.
Yeah, I know.
I was gonna say the same thing, Michelle.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Just two quick announcements, the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission met last week and talked about next, potential next steps to try to resolve the apparent differences the commission has in granting the certificate of appropriateness to the Edison Battery Factory project, the downtown redevelopment project, that was talked about at the last council meeting, where the commission believes that the redeveloper has not provided plans that comport with what they said they were going to build at the time that the commission provided a certificate of appropriateness, which, under our ordinance, is required for the redeveloper to do work on a historic building in a historic site. So the commission decided to organize and prepare a presentation and brief both the township and the redeveloper at some point in the near future. And perhaps the administration knows more about that on next steps than I do. Also, last week, the Open Space Commission met, I was not there, I was in these, in the chambers for the planning board meeting on the redevelopment, proposed redevelopment down in the valley that Councilwoman McCartney spoke about. After the meeting, the chairman of the commission submitted a request that resulted from a vote of the commission recommending that the council consider an appraisal of a 16-acre piece of property on Ridge Road, which runs parallel just to the east of Prospect Avenue, near the intersection with Mount Pleasant Avenue. And there's a 16-acre site there that's owned by a developer who is potentially interested in not building residential structures on the property, but is interested in whether the township might be willing to acquire the property. So probably in October, at one of the October council meetings, we'll see that, that proposal come before the council for consideration. And just wanted to also make a shout out to everyone who was at the Sunday stop for Nikhil Badlani walk-run at the high school football field, the Surianno Athletic Complex. There was a ton of people there, they raised a ton of money and awareness. Nikhil Badlani was a young, young man in West Orange who was killed in an automobile accident, a three-car automobile accident in South Orange several years ago, and the parents turned what was just a horrible situation into a foundation that works for improvements in traffic safety and also provides scholarships for children to study music. So it was a wonderful event, and just wanna say thank you to everybody who showed up and contributed money.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Thank you. The PR Commission met last week, and their main focus was to assist Ms. Brill in her endeavor this Sunday for the Mayor's 5K Walk. So they will be there on site, all our members, and assisting Ms. Brill in any which way they can. So I'll let Ms. Brill talk a little bit about her event in a little bit. Also, last week, I went with Ms. Brill down to New Brunswick, to a place called Unity Square Community Center. We attended a workshop sponsored by Choice Neighborhoods. It was a workshop in regards to neighborhood revitalization, how to rebuild your neighborhoods. It was a great workshop, many strategies we both learned there, and that we're excited to come back and work with some community organizations in town and get the ball rolling to keep, you know, promoting all things good West Orange. So it was a great, great use of our time. Let's see, this past weekend, also was a great weekend, actually, two past weekends were really great weekends in town. Lot of great events, lot of fall events, last weekend, all these sports, all the recreation sport teams were out, it was opening day at the PAL, the Mountaintop had their annual soccer tournament. This weekend, the Mountaintop, Saturday night, will be sponsoring a, another fundraiser, their Mountaintop Hockey League will be playing our, some of the parents there will be playing our firemen, our bravest, West Orange's bravest. Also like to thank our firemen, chief is here this evening, you'd be proud of four of your firefighters for sitting in the dunk tank at the Hazel Avenue Carnival this past weekend. And that was a great event, and they volunteer their time for the kids to raise some money for their PTA, so kudos to our firemen, and also to our police officer who's, who were out in full force at the Belani event, and they're always assisting there at that event as well. So it's been great weekends, hopefully this weekend too will be some more events. And always look for a car wash on the weekends up at West Orange High School, there's usually some organization that you can get you a nice car wash for $10. So that's all I have right now. Council President?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
I apologize, I forgot. A couple of senior citizens I spoke with in the last week or so asked if everyone up here on the dais could try to speak slowly and clearly into their microphones, because not only is it difficult to hear sometimes in the council chambers, but it's also difficult to hear sometimes on our videos. So they just asked if we could just speak into the microphones and speak a little bit slowly so that they can catch it going forward. Please.
Did anyone, was everyone able to hear me? Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for, for your announcements. Sue, what do you like? Yeah? Okay. I do wanna mention a few events coming up, but first, I wanna thank the Register of Deeds and Mortgages, she was here earlier, to make a presentation about how they safeguard our deeds in our mortgage documents over at the county hold of records. So if you missed the presentation, I urge the audience and the folks at home to play the tape, starting Thursday, it's gonna be either on television or you can find it online, and just become educated, as we were, on how the process works. What the Honorable Dana Roane shared was that she encouraged everybody to obtain a copy of your mortgage at least once a year, every other year. They're available over at the county building, and just to make sure that nothing's changed, no liens, unforeseen liens have been placed on, on that, on that mortgage document. And also, as you know, a mortgage document is also a public record, so anybody can get a copy of that. So there are concerns about manipulating those documents, you know, when they're obtained by third parties, or accessing the documentation for other purposes. So she encouraged everybody to go out and get a copy of those documents, so check it out, starting on Thursday. I do wanna talk about a charity game going on on Saturday, it's for the hockey teams. We've had like a very successful startup hockey program for the children here in town, and it's gonna be the fire department playing the All-Stars, the West Orange All-Stars, which is a group made up of hockey dads and former hockey players in their twilight years that, that compete. It's a great time, it's over at the Richard J. Cody Arena, or the South Mountain Arena, starting at 6:30 this Saturday. I'll be there playing the music and announcing the scores, so I can't get on that hockey rank, but, you know, I'll be enjoying myself.
I'll take your place.
And entertaining everyone, along with Assemblyman McKeon will be there as well. We'll be playing some good music, so if you have any, any requests, just let me know, and we'll look it up. So that's on Saturday, 6:30, come out and support the hockey programs. And I did talk to some seniors here in the audience that live at the Rent a House. There's a new program, federal program nationwide called RAD, which is changing the way a lot of these buildings are subsidized, and in some ways is negatively impacting some residents by resulting in increases in rent. So I'm gonna be looking into that, I actually, I actually did a RAD closing in my profession. So I'm very familiar with how that program works, and I promise our members in the audience that I'll look into that. There are some complaints about those rents are going up too high, and I know Steve Condon, who's the chairman of the board there, is also very knowledgeable, so we'll give him a call tomorrow, and we'll see what we can do for you. So that's that. Lastly, we have a, there's some optical exams, anybody need an optical test, there's a group called the Optical Academy coming over to, to the Holy Trinity Church, which is on Main Street, 315 Main Street, this Saturday. They're gonna, they're gonna be performing eye tests, optical tests, and they're also going to have hardware for $30 a person, or they take any form of insurance as well. So this is at the Holy Trinity Church on Main Street on Saturday morning between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. So if, if you're due, I encourage residents to come out. So that's all I have for today, anybody else? No, you can announce it, Sue. The Tim Groves Scholarship Event.
This is the Timmy Grove Memorial Scholarship Fundraiser. The, you know, I like partnerships, so this is between the Schogler Group, the West Orange PBA Local 25, the West Orange Firefighters Association FMBA Local 28, West Orange SOA Local 228, and in conjunction with the West Orange Scholarship Fund. Cordially invited to the Timmy Grove Memorial Scholarship Fundraiser Wednesday, October 12th, 6 to 8 PM at The Loft, which is located at 350 Pleasant Valley Way in the Wilshire Grand Hotel.
Thank you. Officer Groves is a well-loved officer, patrolled Main Street, and we miss him greatly, and in his honor, there's a scholarship fund that was started by several West Orange residents and friends, and this is the second annual event on October 13th, so, I'm sorry?
12.
12. So we'll, we'll be announcing more about the event going forward, so. Madam Clerk, that concludes our, our agenda.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're gonna get started, we just talked about the republic and some of the issues going on out there, but in this part of the, of the meeting, we exercise the most powerful form of, of freedom of speech that our country extends to all of us. So I urge you all to come up, you have five minutes, give your name and address, and express to the town council any issue that you may have on mind, or anything that you may wish for us to look into. Yes, we have an eager hand back there. That's you, yes.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, council members. My name is Marion Sevestri, I live at 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue, West Orange. I was here, I believe, in a meeting in August to voice my concerns about the traffic light at Prospect and Mount Pleasant, and about the backup of traffic that sometimes is at Gregory Avenue. I experienced some difficulty yesterday, I spoke to Councilman Guarino before the meeting, so I just wanna know where we are in that, and what jurisdiction is, it's the county, it's the state, if anything is going to be done about it. The second thing I'm here about also is about the advisory board for the senior citizens. I was not at the meeting, but I did read about it, and I did watch it on the TV. When I was a councilwoman in Orange, I was very concerned about the senior citizens, and under my purview, we did start an advisory board. It was due to the fact that in my district, there was no senior building. When you're at a senior building, it's easier to find out what's going on. I had many, many seniors that lived in private homes and did not know anything that was going on. So when we developed the advisory board, which was not big, maybe there's about 10 to 12 members on our advisory board, they were able to get out all the information more, and it made the seniors in my district very happy that they knew what was going on, because before, without the advisory board, they did not know what was going on at all. And this, and the town did give a lot of services, as West Orange does. And I know this evening, you mentioned it. building, it's easier to find out what's going on. I had many, many seniors that lived in private homes and did not know anything that was going on. So when we developed the advisory board, which was not big, maybe there's about 10 to 12 members on our advisory board, they were able to get out all the information more. And it made the seniors in my district very happy that they knew what was going on. Because before, without the advisory board, they did not know what was going on at all. And the town did give a lot of services, as West Orange does. And I know this evening you mentioned about the senior citizen, two bus rides they were having, and about the eye exams and everything. For those seniors who do not watch TV or do not, are not at a senior building, it's hard for them to find out what's going on. I myself live in a private place. I have a 97-year-old aunt, she's a senior. I'm a senior too. We don't know what's going on. And I would like that. I think with an advisory board, it reaches out to more people in the community. And I would hope that the council will revisit that ordinance again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Next speaker?
Yes, ma'am. Back here.
Hi, Judy Steer, 1026 Smith Manor Boulevard, West Orange, President, West Orange TNVR. It's been a while since we visited you, and we have been very, very, very busy. Just thought it was time to give you a bit of an update. And then we have to go back out. In...
Yeah, a little louder.
Maybe the air conditioning. I know that's probably...
Okay. Can you hear me now? I did. You couldn't hear me. All right. I don't know what to do with this, so. I'm at a loss. Okay. Judy Steer, 1026 Smith Manor Boulevard. Okay, good. And I am president of the West Orange TNVR. That's trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release of cats in the town. We had an ordinance approved back in February, and we have been very, very busy before and after. In 2015, we didn't get started until May. We trapped spay-neutered 64 cats. We took in 32 kittens, again, spay-neutered, and all found their forever homes. In 2016, to date, actually, it's a little bit more because there's a couple in the traps now, we have done 137 furrows. We have taken in 49 kittens. They have been adopted. There are 19 still in foster. So anybody out there who can foster or help us in any way possible, we're a small group and we work day and night, literally. I also want to thank those who have contributed either financially or with food, goods, litter boxes, litter, whatever. We take it all. It's been quite a ride. It really has. But we have taken off the streets the possibility of a cat being pregnant, I would say, and all the kittens, close to over 300 in such a short period of time, 16 months. So, and we're still at it. This is not quite up to date. I printed out a copy for everyone. I think it's been very successful, and I thank you for allowing us this ordinance. There are a lot of people out there that still think they cannot feed the cats. They're afraid of their colony being destroyed. And it takes some convincing sometimes that we're not going to do that. But as I said, I think we've been successful and I hope we can keep on going. Thank you.
Judy, thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
I know it's difficult to hear. I see a wide concentration in the back. If anyone's interested in hearing better, I encourage residents to move up front. Just don't be shy. We have seating over here on this side and on this side, so you can hear better. Just a suggestion. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Scarpa, 343 Gregory Avenue. I'm here to speak before the council tonight to voice frustration regarding the proposed ordinance to create the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Our seniors' needs are not being met. I've personally spoken with many seniors who have a number of problems that I believe could be easily resolved and would significantly improve the quality of their life. One example would be the ability of many of our seniors to simply get the groceries. Many of our seniors are unable to get the groceries they need since there's a limit to the number of bags that they are allowed to bring onto the seniors' van when they ride home from the grocery store. One senior stated that she is forced to take a cab home rather than ride the seniors' van because of what she described as the three-bag limit. This seems ridiculous. We need to acknowledge the fact that the concerns of many of our seniors are not well-understood. And many of them are unable to come to the council to speak with us. Therefore, they would benefit from a seniors' advisory board who better understand their needs and are positioned to communicate their needs. I'm also troubled by the fact that Councilwoman Castellino and Councilman Guarino have expressed concerns about the language in the ordinance, yet we are not allowed to discuss it. Council President Victor Cirillo said, "The public criticizes us for not following protocol." I sincerely doubt the public would have a problem with a discussion taking place about the language of such an important ordinance. Our seniors and those in the community who have come to this council on numerous occasions to advocate for our seniors, request this ordinance be discussed in a more substantive manner in our next council meeting. I hope that you will give our seniors the consideration they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Next speaker? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Sweeney at 240 Bend. I'm also the president of the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. I wanted to speak to you tonight about two things. First, the library director is not here tonight. He's usually here to tell you some good things. I know he's ill. I assume that's not the reason, that's the reason he's not here. And, but I did want to tell you, I view this year as the Year of the Library. The reason I do that is we've got a lot of good things going on. First, I want to thank the Township Council. You approved the contract to fix the exterior of the building. That is so essential to the appearance, the attractiveness, and the overall sense of well-being of the library. But that's one of the many things that's going on. If the library director were here, he'd probably tell you that in August, they reorganized the collection. They removed and moved down to the storage area those books which are not being in their active collection for use. They reorganized the upstairs. They've sorted out the books that are not being used, and all because they are part of this organization called Buckles, which is an acronym, all which allows them to rely on an organization of 77 libraries for the books, so that they don't throw out any books that they, that someone doesn't have. So that's, they have to have. So those are the major things. But what I wanted to tell you, the main reason I was here tonight, is to tell you about a, what we view as an extraordinary book sale at the library. It's all part of that notion, I say, the Year of the Library, kind of like the Chinese naming every year or something. What that has done, it has two purposes. One, to clean out the areas so that the bottom of the library can be used for community programs, for educational programs, including English as a second language programs, and some possible science, technology, and math programs. In other words, and ultimately a community space. That's the first thing. Second thing is to generate money for a lot of the programs that, as you recall, in the beginning of the year, we talked about money for the library. The Township Council stepped up and provided money to fix the outside. We, the library, and everyone in the community are now working to bring other sources of money. That book sale is an important element of it. I have some flyers. I did want to tell you, the books have been collected for many years. They started storing some of these valuable books, art, music, biography, other things. These are some of the older, but they're really high-value kind of books. No one ever wanted to throw them out. They wanted to save them for a time when you could commercialize them. That's been going on for over 10 years. They also have new books, new biography, new fiction, lots of things. Most of our books, $1 to $2. Some of those high-end art, photography, music, and other things are going to be a little more expensive. But this, we've called it a collector-level book sale. I want to say it's also a family-level book sale. We have children's books, we have adolescent books, we have adult books, we have all the age groups, and it's a wonderful opportunity. I didn't tell you what day it is. I think you should know that. It's Saturday, October 1st, from 10:00 to 4:00, and Sunday, October 2nd, from 10:00 to 3:00. I have some brochures, flyers. I'm going to put them up here. I hope everyone would attend. It's just a wonderful opportunity. We had, there's lots of other things going on. There are grants being sought with the aid of the grants person that the township helped. Thank you again, Township, for that. And that's to provide, again, this, I call it a STEM. Sometimes people tell me it's a STEAM, but a program, STEM, science, technology, engineering, math. But there's a lot of things happening. When the new bricks get up there, it'll be a wonderful opportunity for a rededication of this library as the new central library of West Orange. And thank you. I had to speak fast because I only had five minutes, and so I apologize for Councilman Kukoviac for speaking too fast. But thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Gerald. Yes.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Lori Capfer. I'm living at 65 Fitz Randolph Road. Grateful to be here with you tonight. I want to first thank the town for, you know, the school year just started. I walk with my children, who are right here, to school nearly every day, along with some of our neighbors and their children. And we were really glad to see there are some speed feedback signs that, for those of you who don't know, it's when you have a sign that flashes the speed that you're driving as you're approaching it. We were glad to see that those were out for the beginning of the school year. Hope they're being used somewhere else right now. I think one thing that I noticed that when they were out is that I was really hoping that people would actually then drive the school zone speed limit or something close to it. But we did still see a lot of drivers who were, you know, going 40 or 45 miles per hour in the school speed zone when children were present. As you know, the school speed zone there is 25 miles per hour. You know, you see, anyone who pays attention to pedestrian safety issues, you see, and traffic safety issues, you see a statistic shared that says that, you know, pedestrians hit, when the driver's going 40 miles per hour, pedestrian has a 10% chance of survival. If they're hit at 20 miles per hour, they have closer to a 90% chance of survival. So, you know, I think about this with our children who are walking every day. You know, if they were hit and the driver's going close to the school speed zone, they have a much, much better chance of surviving that crash than the majority of the traffic that I see out there, which is doing closer to 40 miles per hour. In fact, we had speed boxes out there last fall, and they showed that most drivers are doing closer to 40 miles per hour. That highlights, in my mind, the need for some enforcement out there. That's something that we've been asking for. When I ask for it, you know, I get a lot of, the feedback I get is that, you know, we're limited, our police department is limited, our traffic department in the police division, the police department is limited, and I certainly understand that. But I also know that when something's important, we find a way to make that work, that we show what we prioritize with our resources. And so I'm asking again that we would have some enforcement presence out on Pleasant Valley Way for our high school students and our Kelly Elementary students. The police department would be out there fighting traffic crime, because that's what I see out there a lot of mornings, and it's still very upsetting to me. One other thing I wanted to ask about, I know that, you know, sometimes streetscape improvements are shown to be a way of slowing traffic. It's called passive traffic calming. And I know that the town, perhaps even in partnership with the county, may be going after a TAP grant. And just curious if that's moving forward. I think it is. And one last item is that Kelly Elementary, again, this year is participating in International Walk to School Day. This year, that's being held on Wednesday, October 5th. So what that means is that we'll have children, students of ours, walking with parents from neighborhoods around the school, leaving around 8:15 and meeting at the school around 8:30. We'll have a short celebration where we hope that the kids can celebrate their accomplishment in walking to school. We know that this encourages physical activity. It encourages, you know, thinking about the environmental impact of cars. It encourages people, the children getting to know their community, getting to know their neighborhood. So we're hoping for a good turnout that day. And please, anyone is welcome to join us. So, and then, did you want to say anything? Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Take your time.
My name is Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello. I live at 65 Fitz Randolph Road, and I have a few questions.
Yes.
Okay. So my first question is, why are the cars still going so fast? My second question is, and I don't need to, I don't mean to be rude about this, but we haven't done much about this. So I am wondering why we're not doing much about this. And my third question is, can you make the speed limit signs more effective, please?
Thank you, Andrew.
That's okay. Take your time.
Hi, my name is Natalie Capfer. I live at 65 Fitz Randolph Road. I think that Pleasant Valley Way should have more crosswalks. Pleasant Valley Way should have more crosswalks because, because pedestrians will not, wait, where, so pedestrians will not cross in the middle of the road. Another reason that I think Pleasant Valley Way should have more crosswalks is so that there will be, wait, so that there will be people crossing in more places. So drivers will hopefully go slower because there would be more places that they... because there would be more places that they would have to slow down or stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Good job.
Thank you all. Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Brill, Executive Director with the Downtown Alliance. Thank you, Councilman. I guess a couple of weeks ago, or the last meeting, we reported that there was some economic development, some changes along Main Street. And I had mentioned then that we had 41 open storefronts in the beginning of January. We were down to 23. I did mention that it was a fluid process. So, very sad to report that Goodfellas, our pizzeria downtown, has closed. And if you know Nick or know Goodfellas at all, he was always the first business to step up to, you know, give us cheap pizza, you know, participate in anything that we needed him to do. He ended up getting sick. He had appendicitis. He needed to take some time off. Wasn't really able to cover the store. Couldn't work out a deal with his landlord, and so the store is closed now. Hoping that he will be able to find another space and reopen very, very soon. So, that's a sad note. We also have a lot of, you know, great stuff happening. I wanted to clarify about the 5K run. We do have a Kids Fun Run, which is run by the library. That's any kid under 11 years old. It's a mile. We run from Town Hall down to the valley. Well, I don't run. But the kids run from Town Hall down to the valley, and they come back again. And that starts at 9:30. You can register on the library site. You can register onsite at Town Hall the morning of. Or you can just call or send somebody an email. It's free. And, you know, we usually get a good group of participation. We also have something that I think has flown under the radar about the age of the kids that can participate in the 5K. You can register and compete if you're 12 years old to 15 years old. And that's a whole little category where you can run and compete. So you have to register and pay registration fee for that, but there is a spot available for you, and we welcome you to come and participate. Michelle had mentioned that she attended training with us, and actually, Susan, Jerry, and Michelle have gone to various trainings that the state has offered us. And the thing that jumped out at us, we brought, you know, Michelle came along, and we brought James Hughes, one of the realtors that lives in town, with us. And the minute they heard that we had a realtor and a councilperson with us, they were like, you know, all excited because things don't really happen in a vacuum. They really need the support of the legislature and government, and they really need for realtors to understand what the big picture is. And the fact that since James has joined the Downtown Alliance, he's come to almost every single event that we've held. He is, and Michelle too, has really been there when she can to, you know, to really learn about, there are specific things that need to happen on a government level and organically within the community. And I was excited to see, and I was excited to see, you know, the unity crowd from New Brunswick being glad that they cared that, you know, we were there and that we brought, you know, legislators with us. On another note, we have Small Business Saturday coming up. I know I don't want to talk about the fall and winter, but Small Business Saturday is November 26th, and you can sign up to get all of your free American Express stuff just by logging on their website. And you can get bags and totes and all kinds of stuff. That's free. And we are, as a township and the Chamber of Commerce, are participating in Small Business Saturday. The following week is the Holiday Open House, where Santa comes and we have a holly trolley ride. And that is December 3rd. The week between Small Business Saturday and the Holiday Open House will be Restaurant Week here in West Orange. So we're working on a logo, we're working on recruiting businesses to offer something a little bit special, and we're hoping that everyone in town goes out and supports all of the great restaurants throughout the whole township. On a last note, I was at the hockey game last year, and I think that we should talk to Chief Smiraldo about keeping those really big firemen in the firehouse. And maybe the West Orange dads will have a shot at. They just got clobbered last year. Is it like, I think that the fire department says, can you play hockey? Is like the first question. They're just big and huge, and they play hockey really, really well. So I, again, support everyone that wants to come. That's a great event. It's really fun. And it's right in our hometown. So that's if you have any questions for me.
No.
No, but I appreciate, Council President, for me, bringing up, as a former Mountain Top League running coach, I appreciate talking about the separate category for the young runners because we just saw that at the Badlani Foundation, how many children were so young. So, it's good.
Thank you very much. I'll be there 7 o'clock. Next speaker? Yes, ma'am, back there.
Everybody can hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, town council members. The general contractor hired, Heidi Sawyer Gregory Avenue. The general contractor hired by the township for the Gregory Schools parking lot expansion and driveway failed to fulfill several construction requirements indicated on the plans by Petri Engineering. If the council permits, I'd like to give you copies of a document I prepared that outlines not only unfinished work, but details many mistakes done by the general contractor. Before I begin to review the document, basically, I'm just going to do highlights. I'd like to point out that it is wrong to publicly proclaim that this construction project is finished. Posting photos or videos online of this project declaring that it is complete is a total misrepresentation of the truth. And it is my hope that after examining this document, the council will demand a refund from the contractor. They didn't do all the work indicated on the plans, and they cut corners causing problems that will need to be corrected by another contractor. Because of time limits, I'm going to highlight only a few items from the document. Number one, geotextile, also known as filter fabric, must be placed between the subgrade and gravel prior to paving with asphalt. It is needed for proper water drainage when using permeable asphalt. This was never installed by the contractor. Disabled curb ramps and warning pads were not installed. In a gross error, the general contractor removed a 20-year-old, 35-foot evergreen tree. This must be replaced. Approximately a dozen azalea bushes and ornamental grasses parallel to the front of the school were destroyed by the contractor and were later removed by the BOE. When will they be replaced? Centennial Plaza is no longer compliant for the disabled to use. All the sidewalk alongside the plaza needs to be removed and redone to the same level as the plaza's pavers in order for it to be compliant. Parking lot lighting. There've been two events at the school in the evening so far. How much longer will the township have to pay fees to Schurger for temporary lighting units? The flagpole still isn't installed. The school sign still isn't installed. This project is completed, really? I could go on and on. The residents are entitled to know specifically from each of you, minus any rhetoric, how you are going to fix the problems I've outlined. We need to hear the solution and dates of completion since winter is fast approaching. Now, I'd like to talk about Lowell Avenue. I have a photo to illustrate why I plan to discuss it. Just have one copy, so you'll have to pass it. Tonight is the first reading of an ordinance 2493-16, which changes the rules of parking for the easterly curbed side of Lowell Avenue between Walker Road and Winding Way. This ordinance corresponds to the new signage present on Lowell Avenue. I'd like to hear how this parking ordinance is going to be enforced. The kiss-and-go on Lowell Avenue is, so far, working in the morning. The acid test will be to see if it continues to do so in bad weather and during the winter. Despite the success in the morning, the opposite can be said for the afternoon when school is being dismissed. Parents are ignoring the no parking from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. signs on the eastbound side of Lowell Avenue. Every afternoon, cars line the full length of the block end to end, and on some days, cars are again double parking. I thought the whole point of getting the buses off this street was to promote safety for the children. What was the point of spending in excess of $400,000 if parents are violating the law and creating unsafe conditions for the children leaving school for the day? A parking violation ticket is $35. On a given day, there is a minimum of 20 cars parked illegally on Lowell. You multiply $35 by 20, you get $700 of parking violations for one day. A school year is 184 days. If you subtract three snow days, the total days comes out to 181 that school days are in session. So if you do the math, that's $700 multiplied by 181, grand total of 126,000, 126,000, not 100,000, $1,700 and change. There's the money you need to fix the streets, cleaners. There you go. Got the money right there. Fix the street cleaners. Law enforcement needs to be present when school lets out to keep the rogue parents from parking illegally. If it pleases President Cirillo, would it be possible to have a two-minute extension? I just have one more point that I'd like to get across.
We usually, we normally don't do that. Just, but you can finish your remarks. Go ahead, just finish your remarks. But we don't do extensions. We just do it as a courtesy.
I'd like to comment on the recent vote taken against the formation of a senior citizen advisory board. With the exception of Councilman Krakowiak, I am appalled that the remaining council members voted no to prevent this important initiative from being formed. Voting no sends a message that you don't care about the senior population in this township. All the other townships in Essex County have senior citizen advisory boards, committees, et cetera. Why not in West Orange?
Can you respect the speaker, please?
Our seniors do not get a break on their taxes like other townships. They fund the schools, they fund your salaries and services for this town. They also bring wisdom through the contribution of their time as volunteers to better this community. Don't discriminate against this group, please. It is through no fault of their own that they have chosen to remain a part of their diverse community. It's time to give back to them since they have given so much to us. Thank you, and I look forward to your responses.
Thank you, Ms. Cirillo. Next speaker? Yes, Ms. Moro?
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. And thank you for having Ms. Rone here. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your suggestion.
I think it's important. I couldn't convince one senior that, because she has a copy of her D., that anything could happen. So hopefully she'll watch this.
There you go. Broadcast.
Okay. I wrote a million things, but I just don't even want to read them. I'm tired of reading and looking about the bizarre performance at the September 6th meeting when the ordinance was voted down. I just want to limit it to one thing. In the Chronicle this past week, Shaun, you did another good job. The mayor stated that the services that, he showed a chart, I guess, to the reporter, listing all the services township offers, which are reported to be comparable to or greater than those in surrounding towns such as South Orange, Maplewood, Livingston, and Montclair. If we have them here, they're probably underground because I don't know about them, and neither do the seniors. I just got copies of Livingston, one of the towns he mentioned, Livingston's two publications. This is issued on a quarterly basis. And Karen, you're probably familiar with all of this from being from Livingston, right? Some of the programs. Now, they have a senior youth and leisure services group. It's good because it's intergenerational. They have youth helping the seniors. The programs are off the chart. I'm just going to try to read some of them. Oh, their shuttle bus costs $2. They charge $2 for the ride to the train station. They have an arthritis land and water workout. They use the YMCA. They have Balance for Seniors. They have Forever Fit. Introduction to Ballroom Dancing, Line Dancing, Tai Chi. They also have Zumba Golf. Keeping Up with Technology. Learn about iPads, iPhones, and other smart devices. Excuse me. Must bring your own device. Instructions provided by Livingston High School Techy Teen Tuition Club. This is good. We don't have that. Facebook, Twitter, and other social media. None of, if the seniors do have, I'm still sending the wrong things to the wrong people, but I may learn someday. Gets embarrassing sometimes. They have a town-wide cook-off. Secretly healthy with fruits and vegetables. This was held one day. Ice cream social. They have adult online learning. They had a Veterans Day luncheon. Their library, and I'm going to talk to Jerry about that. Their library has some really good stuff, and I promised you I would be looking for stuff for you. This is another book that they publish. Again, a lot of the information is published in here. We couldn't, in a month of Sundays, and I challenge the mayor, I will meet with him. I will, I have brought bulletins to this council, to Mr. Sayers. I mean, tons and tons of information. There's no way anybody could refute or dispute that other towns have much, much more than we have. And if we want to catch up, it's going to take a month of Sundays. So to say that we have comparable, no. Montclair is unreal with what they offer. They're winning awards. And when it comes to complete streets, most of these towns have started them. When these initiatives become law, we're going to be way behind. And our seniors in this town, in my opinion, because I am going around, I'm going to all of these different towns to interview people. I have one set up for Livingston. We're going to Montclair again. We can't, we can't compare. For the mayor to say that we have as much, if not more, he has to prove that to me, and I'll meet with him anytime he wants to. Thank you.
Next speaker? Yes, ma'am, back there.
My name is Lee Saul, and I live at 47 Carteret Street. And I want to know how it is that, the many times that I have been here and seen somebody presiding over the council, and there have been several people who have presided, but I have never seen Joe Krakowiak presiding over the council. I didn't realize that this is not a rotating council, but it is a shunning council. I realized that because there was a little article in the Chronicle. And it evidently is a popularity contest. It's not fair. It's discriminatory, and I am ashamed that our council behaves... It's not fair, it's discriminatory, and I am ashamed that our council behaves in that manner. I hope that you will change this discrimination, and each of you have a fair time to be the council president.
Yes, next member of the audience? Yes, we have a hand back there?
Good evening, council president and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And family, community members. Paula Dixon Taylor, Watchung Avenue. I just want to, do you know what happened in 1953?
I was born.
I was born too.
My mother.
Which makes, which makes me a senior.
Yeah, my mother.
Okay? And perhaps, Mr. Krokowiac, the reason why you've never had your turn is because you're becoming or you are a senior. I want to let you know that I don't understand why this was not approved. Our seniors are valuable to us, and I think you should revisit this and think about this again. I agree with the public comment, the people from the public that came up and spoke about it, okay? And I hope y'all don't get old.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Yes.
Good evening. Mary O. Clemmison, Cherrywood Circle. I'm going to speak about the senior advisory committee. Unfortunately, because of the vote and the objections about it, I think that essentially these are fighting words. And I think the November election should be about the seniors. For the record, the mayor and four out of five members of the West Orange Town Council have recently voted against the ordinance allowing seniors to represent themselves in a volunteer-based, no-cost advisory committee. This is like being against motherhood and apple pie. Education and children's issues are well represented in West Orange, and in fact, if you look at the budget, two-thirds of our budget are represented by kids in schools, and if you add on all the other costs, it's probably, I don't know what, 75, 80%. What about the growing concern seniors have about mobility and livability? Many other towns in New Jersey have happily embraced senior advisory committees. Why not West Orange? It's an extremely odd issue to pick a fight about since everyone has a mom and a dad who either are seniors or will be seniors. All these people, of course, care about the range of services and overall affordability offered by their local township. It's also a really odd issue to pick a fight about in an election year, and this is easy to make into an election issue. And this pains me to say it. Jerry, I respect you and I like you. Jerry Guarino and Michelle Costalino, I don't know you, Michelle, are both running to maintain their seats. But why should any voter want to vote to reward this voting record against seniors? Right now, only Joe Krokowiac has come out in support of the senior proposal. So seniors, all of you out there, and that includes any, by some definitions, anyone over the age of 55, even ARP calls seniors over the age of 55. We should really make sure that our town council people are happy to represent all of our residents all of the time. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Meyer with 19 Howell Drive. I have no fire in brimstone tonight, so I do want to say I do support, I hope that the council reconsider's their position on the senior advisory committee. And I hope we can clear up the issue with the facade of the redevelopment building per the article that was in the Chronicle last week. So please, you know, let us know what's going on with that at another council meeting. What I really want to say is that the, a few months ago, I heard Mr. Trank talk about the Operation Hope. Is that the name of it?
Yes.
Okay. Which West Orange Police Department is starting, which is really a very advanced way of looking at drug addiction and trying to fight the problem of drug addiction. So I volunteered to go through the training and become what they call an angel, although I don't feel particularly angelic. But anyway, I just, they have about, I just want to let you know, they have about 30 volunteers. I went to the first two training sessions last Saturday and again this past Sunday, and again this morning for another three hours, like a role-playing session. And I think that the program really has solid footing. The head of it, who's a gentleman named Mark Ackerman, who's the director of admissions at Integrity House, is doing a really wonderful job in portraying the realities of drug abuse, what it does to the individual, what it does to the families, and how to, how to look at this in a more modern, or if you want to use the word progressive, way than traditional, just, you know, throw them in jail and throw away the, you know, throw away the key, which has not been working. I spoke to Mark this morning, and he says that a lot of other towns are interested in doing the same thing. In fact, he was going to South Jersey today to speak to some other townships or counties. I think it was somewhere in Atlantic County, he said. I don't remember. That the other towns in the, in the state are interested in implementing a program like this also. So just in case anybody doesn't know, what, what this program is, is that if someone is addicted to drugs, they can come into the police station and say, "I've had enough of the drugs," and it will be someone, a civilian like me or the other people who are volunteering, who can start the process of getting them involved in detoxification and rehabilitation so that they could get their life back again. And that's a deadly serious problem. It's a very, very expensive problem, the way we've been fighting it by just jailing people. And, you know, I hope it works, and I think it will work, and I think that's a good outlook. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Yes, Tammy.
Yeah, it's freezing in here.
And Tammy, congratulations again. Tammy Williams was just selected as the new chairperson of the Human Relations Commission, where she's going to work to enhance the diversity in West Orange and build communications among so the different ideas and different people. So congratulations. I sent you that private note, and I really mean that. You have a lot of energy, and anything that we can do to further that cause and those initiatives, we're all there for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Tammy Williams. I reside at 16 Hillside Avenue. I also serve as the secretary of the Board of Directors of NJAI. I want to report that we had a very successful 13th Annual Jazz Festival on Saturday, September 17th, at OSPAC. It was very well-attended. Our performers this year were Jeff Bradshaw, special guest Allison Williams, Nat Adderley Jr., Bob DeVoe Trio, Glenn Weber Quintet, Jan Carden, and the Jazz House Kids from Montclair. We would like to thank those council members who gave us donations and supported our endeavors. And we would like to remind everyone that this is a self-funded venue, and we encourage West Orange residents and beyond to purchase memberships for next season. We appreciate everyone's continued support, and we just thank everyone, if you were here, for coming out. We appreciate you, and we look forward to, again, a wonderful season in 2017. And on a second note, as a member of the HRC, it may not be satisfactory for everyone, but I want to put out there that we do hear the call of the citizens, the senior citizens, and as far as the HRC is concerned, we will do everything that we can to support whatever initiatives that we can provide. So we hear you, and we'll make sure. Thank you. We'll make sure that we can do all that we can to support senior services. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Next speaker?
Hi, good evening. Sharon Sherman, Seven Lake Drive, West Orange. I was taught by my parents to respect my elders. I was taught by my parents to take care of our elders. Unfortunately, I can't do that for my parents any longer, but I can come out here today and tonight and support the West Orange seniors. I don't really know what went into the thinking by the council to not pass the ordinance for this senior advisory committee. All I know is, is after reading the Chronicle, and after speaking with some seniors, and after sitting here, all I can say is, is that perhaps the council should reconsider their position. It seems to me that there are a lot of people who really want this advisory committee. It seems to me that there are a lot of seniors who need this advisory committee. It seems to me that there are a lot of people who could benefit from this advisory committee. What doesn't seem to me is that there's a real good reason to say no. So please reconsider this position. I'm not a senior. I don't even fit into that 55 and older rule yet, but I'm here to stand up for them. Some of our seniors might not want to come out and stand up for themselves. They're tired, they're old, they don't want to. Maybe they're afraid to. It's our responsibility as citizens of this town to stand up for our seniors.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Next speaker? Adam Clark? Make a motion? Yeah, we're going to close public comments, and we're going to move on to the council portion. Any of my colleagues wish to, to respond to the commentary? Who would like to start?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you, council president. I have four pages of notes. I think what I found out this evening, or what it sounded to me this evening, there was an overarching theme that surfaced, and it was really all about grants. Because every speaker, I can tie in right now everything that was just said, particularly about all of the seniors. Ms. Silvestri spoke about notifying public. There is a grant pending right now for a brochure that would inform National Aging and Disability Grant that is already pending. It's been, already, it's been submitted for a brochure, to create a brochure that can be mailed town-wide. So, you know, there was conversation or discussion this evening about the senior advisory. I did vote no because I see the momentum is there to support seniors. I, of course, support seniors, and I have told the Chronicle, it's been addressed in the Chronicle. It's so uncomfortable to be pitted against like this, just like with the library. It was very, very uncomfortable to get pitted against the library because of funding. There were parts of that ordinance that I did not agree with about no cost. There are costs involved, and one in particular is getting the information out to seniors. It's a substantial cost. So we're looking at a grant to create the brochure that was already made through the county, and now it can be updated to keep our seniors' newsletters and brochures available. That's one grant for the seniors, and that addressed the comments from Ms. Silvestri, Susan Scarpa, and others that talked about the seniors. The other one, I don't see Judy Stier still here, but as you know, we submitted our Sustainable Jersey application a few months ago, and we actually got points in our township application for the TNVR program and our ordinance. So that makes us eligible for other grants because other municipalities are adopting the same thing. So there again, I thank Judy for her leadership on that, for all the points that have accrued, for her work, and everyone in the community that came out to support that program. Judy posts quite a few pictures on Facebook about all the adoptions, and it's been highly effective. The library, Jerry Sweeney spoke about the library. There's a grant pending also that they, we have been working with the grant writer on the library grant. And Lori and fam, Lori Capfer and children came out to talk about the traffic on Pleasant Valley Way. And Lori, just to keep you updated, I appreciate all of your professional and personal work that you have contributed and your insight to the, to grants that have already, the township has already been awarded, thanks to you. The New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority grant is, yes, in the works. There's a meeting, I believe, Thursday, at, this Thursday, to talk about the cost. And even if the studies, I mentioned this last time, even if the studies come back that we cannot adjust the speed, this grant would look at all of the traffic calming that Andrew spoke about, the street signs, and, and your daughter also with the crosswalks. So we appreciate you coming out. I didn't know if you wanted to come back, since Megan brought up the Young Runners, I didn't know if you wanted to come back and talk about Girls on the Run. That's what I thought you were going to talk about. Ms. Sawyer, this.
I'll address that when my comments.
Okay. I know our engineer is not here, and all of these conditions definitely have to be looked at, the requirements on the construction that has, that you're citing as unresolved. And Paula said that our seniors are valuable. I wholeheartedly agree. Mark Meyerowitz, your comments about the redevelopment, you know that that's a high priority, and we're definitely looking at that, and we do well resolve the issues that have been brought up by the Historic Preservation Commission. And I thank you for your advocacy on Operation Hope because the training did start, as you said. If it's still, you could still volunteer. If you have missed the mandatory training, there are training videos that will be available, that will come available, and there are still the interactive training sessions are ongoing. So there, I don't have the dates off the top of my head. I know I'm registered for the 5:30 sessions, not the 9 o'clock sessions, but flyers are available here in Town Hall, and if you would like more information, we can call the Health Department Social Services at 973-325-4105. Tammy, welcome. Thank you for chairing the, accepting the chair of the Human Relations Commission. We look forward to working with you on, on any event that you may think of or program that you'd like to see instituted. Kind of conversations on race fell by the wayside. We were very deeply involved with that, with other municipalities a few years back, and if you look at resurfacing that, there were so many. I know how many times, how many meetings I did go to. Goals and objectives are already laid out. You don't even have to recreate all of that. It's already done, and we can pick up where we left off. And with OSPAC, I look forward to the 2017 season. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Who would like to be next?
I'm going next.
Yes?
Thank you. Thank you, council president. I'm sorry Judy left. I want to congratulate her organization for the great work they've done. The ordinance was a great thing to do, and a lot of cats are being adopted, and we're stabilizing our feral cat problem. So congratulations to Judy and TVR people. Mr. Sweeney, you know the library. We're there for the library. We're looking forward to, I know a lot of the books are from my house, so it's like, I'll probably get them back. But thank you, and it's good working in partnership with the friends of the West Orange Library, and I can't wait to see the facade go up and the other improvements that we agreed with to make the library a more enjoyable experience for all of residents. Lori, you know, I'm proud of the work you have done as a board member. Lori, you know, I'm proud of the work you have done as a board member, the pedestrian safety advisory board, and the input you've put in to your children. You know, we're trying the best we can. We've moved along. You know, I moved the speed reduction zone and expanded the speed zones in the school district to help, but like your mom said, it's all about enforcement. And you can have all the fancy signs and all the fancy lights, but without enforcement, cars still go fast. But we're working for you. We're going to make sure you can walk to school and have a safe environment for all of residents, for our youth, for our seniors. But thank you, Lori, for the great work you've done on the board, and we're getting there. The grant is, according to Councilwoman McCartney-Tue, the grant is moving along. I spoke to Ms. Lepore and Mr. Ed Farmer from our grant writing. So, it's within two to weeks of being submitted, and they're getting all the data together. So, hopefully, we'll get that submitted, and hopefully, we'll get awarded the grant for calming and speed calming in the Pleasant Valley District. So, it'll be good things. Mark, good expertise on joining Project Hope, and it's good to have a person of your stamina and ability to work in that group, and you'll be an example for others. And it's good to have you there. When it comes to the Gregory School Project, will it differ engineering for Ms. Lepore and how that's going to be addressed? I'm not an engineer. Megan, thank you for the input on Main Street and the development and the vacant stores going down. I'm sorry to hear about Goodfellas because he's always there for our events, even for the Friends of the Edison Events, he was always there. So, I hope there's something we can do, but you know, I hope everything goes well. Just to speak on seniors, I mean, I think about seniors 24/7, seven days a week, and ever since I came to the council, before I was on a council. It's not just an election year thing for me. It's an always concerned thing for me because my parents taught me to respect their elders, and I wish they were still here, and I wish they lived in this community. But the fact of the matter is, if you go back to the Chronicle and the article that Sean wrote in the Chronicle a number of months ago, I was the only council person who even admitted or actually agreed to that we need to pay attention to our seniors, and they needed something as an advisory board. I was the only one, and that was quoted in the Chronicle. But I take care of our citizens. I go to my Rent a House board meetings. I talk to the seniors at their association meetings. I'm there before election time or after. I'm not just there for election time. I'm there all the time. Seniors are very important. And when people come up and say we don't care about seniors, I can speak for myself. I always care about the seniors. And they always come up to me and thank me. They still remember Hurricane, you know, Superstorm Sandy, when I was there for three days walking the building. So, we do care about our seniors, and that's all I'm going to say. But I thank you all for coming tonight. You're using your podium. This is where you need to, and like I told the residents at Rent a House, don't just stew and complain to yourselves. Come to the council meeting. Let us know exactly how you feel, anytime. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukulka.
I'll try to be brief. On the TNVR, Ms. Deere has left, but I just wanted to tell people that if you want to help, it's really easy. If you want to help reduce the feral cat population in town, or if you want to adopt or foster these animals, go to W-O-T-V-N-R.com. They make it incredibly easy to volunteer. They make it incredibly easy to know what supplies the organization needs, and they also make it very easy to donate money. So, I would encourage everyone to do that. In terms of the library, I appreciate Mr. Sweeney coming up. He ran out of time. Just want to say that I've been trying, I've been working to try to organize, help with several other people, to organize the stacks of books down in the basement. And if you are a book lover, you will be in paradise. I've been trying to, during my nights of insomnia, trying to figure out how many books are down there. The closest I can figure is something between 16,000 and 20,000 books down there. Unbelievable. It's just as good a selection as if you walk into any bookstore. Of all kinds. It's simply amazing. And what I'd like to say is that it is, there are so many books that we need help. If anyone would like to volunteer to come down to the basement this week and next week, get ready for this, please call the library and just leave a message and ask if somebody from the Friends would call back to schedule you to come help. The number is 973-736-0198. And believe me, we need your help. It would be greatly appreciated, and please consider coming to this book. So, you just will not believe the selection of books. At least two-thirds to three-quarters of them are in virtual mint condition. Current biographies, current fiction, literary classics, the children's book section, particularly the picture books, are just unbelievable. If you're looking for books for your children, you can't go wrong here. So, I just encourage everyone to please, please come for that. I appreciate Ms. Kaffler coming to the meeting as she occasionally does and speaking out, and as well as the two Kaffler children who share their mother's articulation and articulateness. So, we appreciate it. I would like to say, I was not aware, I just drove past on Pleasant Valley Way today. I wasn't aware that the speed feedback signs were gone. So, I'd like to just ask the administration if perhaps you could find out where they're being used and how quickly we could get them back, because I think that's a really useful tool. And also want to just also ask the administration, perhaps at the next council meeting, to talk about any enforcement efforts on Pleasant Valley Way. Because as you know, or if you don't know, the state law, and I'm going to overgeneralize, basically says you can't reduce speed limits if the people aren't going slower than the current speed limits. So, anyone who spends any time on Pleasant Valley Way knows that tons of people exceed the speed limit. And in order to get the speed limits, the speed at which people traverse lower, we're going to have to go after the speeders. And there's simply no other way to reduce the overall speeds on Pleasant Valley Way except through enforcement and these speed feedback signs to get the overall speeds down to where we can then say, okay, the speed limits have reduced, the speeding has reduced. So, now we can put in speed limits and then enforce the lower speed limits. So, I just ask the administration to perhaps come at the next council meeting and talk about the, how quickly we can bring back the speed back, speed feedback signs, and also plans for enforcement to try to lower the general speeds there. I want to say thank you to Ms. Sawyer for coming, not only coming to the council, because I know you've had a severe injury in your lower extremities that have made it difficult to walk, so it was great to see you. But I also appreciate that you provided materials in writing with pictures that, something that the administration and the Director of Engineering can look at and respond to factually. I'm amazed at the pictures that you provided of what the afternoon rush on Lowell Avenue looks like, because it is, it's not supposed to be parking, and there is not a parking space on the east side of that property in the pictures that you took. So, people are obviously violating the regulation there, and I agree with you about enforcement. You're going to have, if people aren't doing it voluntarily, you're going to have to be enforced, you're going to have to do the enforcement, and that's going to actually help generate revenue. I suspect if we do have significant enforcement, like we did the first week of school opening, where we had police officers there, that that problem would quickly, would quickly be reduced. And also, just for those of you who have contacted me to tell me that they've seen school buses on Walker Avenue going to and from Gregory, and that was not the plan, I just want to say I've spoken to Mr. Lepore, the Director of Engineering, and he says he's going to inform the school district that no buses should be on Walker Road. So, again, if you see it in the future, please give me another call, send me an email. Finally, I can't tell you how impressed and blown away I am with the people who have come up tonight to speak in favor of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. You guys made the case a heck of a lot better than I ever could and certainly did. I'm just amazed that we have people, so many people in this township who understand this issue and understand the challenge and see the Senior Citizens Advisory Board as a big part of the solution. It is nothing more than a volunteer organization to give the seniors, a growing and important part of our population, an organized voice to simply come up and tell the council and tell the administration what's on their minds and to help advise us on what needs to be done. And there is no more cost involved in this proposed organization than for many other similar boards that the town has given approval to and sanctioned that require town employees to be either advisors or to actually sit on the board. So, I'm with you guys. I just think this is a no-brainer, and I would love to either get the council to revisit this or to just encourage you folks to just form the board. In any case, you don't need the imprimatur of an ordinance to do something that makes so much sense and would bring so much benefit and so much good to our community. So, I sincerely encourage you to put the group together and do what it was intended to do and bring the benefits that were intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukulka.
Thank you, Council President. Before I start, there was one item that was not addressed by my colleagues. Ms. Silvestri's questioned about 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue and Gregory Avenue. Mr. Sayers, have we looked at that?
I'm sorry. What?
At Mount Pleasant Avenue and Gregory Avenue intersection, have we looked at that? Are you sure yet?
Yes, Ms. Lepore was handling that, and he was contacting the state and the county, and I'm not sure what the results were, but I will find out.
Okay. Yeah, I thought he was going to be at tonight's meeting, probably.
Yeah, he could be.
Okay. But he'll be here next time in second reading, because we do have the parking ordinance on first reading tonight for Gregory School. Okay. And Mrs. Deere, I believe she's gone, but I have to congratulate her organization. They have worked really hard, and as she has stated earlier, even a monetary donation would help them go a long way with all their efforts with the cat population in town. I just want to get some of the smaller items done. Tammy, congratulations. It was very enjoyable the other evening at OSPEC. I had a good time, and our musicians are, they're just so talented, and a lot of hard work, but a beautiful event. Even at last week's event, it was really nice that Ms. Brill worked with your organization on the Unity Concert. Okay, let's see. I think I will take Gregory School first. Okay, Ms. Sawyer, I'm glad to see you. I know you did have a tough injury this summer, and I thank you for being patient with all the construction directly outside your front door. Basically, this list here, I don't know, I did not make any public statement. In fact, at the last few council meetings, I kept saying the project was not completed. I've been corresponding with Mr. Eben via email and phone conversations, that Mr. Lepore has a punch list that he's working on with the contractor. And all of, you know, all summer long, I know Mr. Lepore has been in touch with the neighbors, have been working with you, appreciating what observations you all have been making. As far as the AD compliance issue, I'm going to bring this up to him because it is a slight step up, but I still, I don't know why they didn't make accommodations for that. I do know the kids go in through the back of the building. He had questioned the front ramp in the building, but there's an entrance for the students in the back, the AD entrance in the back. But there is a punch list that I know he is working on, so it is not completed. And as again, I stated, I never stated it was. As far as that drone, that was the school board that put that out. And actually, I was hoping they were going to tweak it, which I think they wound up doing, just to inform parents, and they did it more, not so much promotion it's done, but more as awareness to make sure you follow the new directions given by the principal. So, it was done for primarily that reason only, to educate the parents to make sure that they go where they need to be. I've been on the phone with Principal Thompson. I appreciate her efforts at the school. She is aware that the afternoon drop-off needs to be tweaked. And as far as the picture that you showed me, actually, last year even looked even worse when the buses were there on Lowell Avenue with the parent drop-off. The parents were used to having a three-minute drop-off. Went to Mr. Lepore, just changed those signs recently, correct, for in anticipation for the ordinance on first reading. So, you know, maybe in hindsight, he might have, should have left them there until, but whatever the case may be, the principal is aware of items. They're out there, they're tweaking it. And if anybody does see a bus going where they shouldn't be going, you know, and I appreciate you having folks call you, but you should really contact the Transportation Department at the West Orange Board of Education, look for the bus number, and let the Board of Education out, and they'll resolve it immediately. So, that would be the fastest situation to resolve that problem. All right. Our Senior Citizen Advisory Board. With this issue first came up last, I believe, Ms. Morelli, you were coming here since last June, maybe, with this, or sooner, maybe, around that time? And so, we have two issues going on from what I see. One I see, and I really, really appreciate all the due diligence Ms. Morelli and Ms. Zalino have done in regards to Aging in Place. Aging in Place is an initiative that Ms. Morelli is correct. It is a movement that will be moving forward that may become a mandate, and hopefully so. And with that in mind, she has been diligent in giving us a lot of information. I've been researching Montclair, Livingston, and Princeton. I chose those three because she gave me the packets and I wanted to spend the time there. Montclair has been very diligent, where they had received $100,000 grant to implement a great deal of their programming. Livingston, from what I was told, has their community building with the Gray Program with their youth services, and also there's a county office in there as well. So, they're really able to provide a lot of additional programming. And what was the third? Oh, and Princeton has a 501(c)(3) that they formed, and they've been raising a lot of money as well as far as Princeton Medical Center. Have you ever been down there? I unfortunately had to be to that hospital at one point in time, but it's a beautiful facility, and they offer a lot of funding. Montclair's funding comes through Partners in Health, also part of the Mountainside Hospital has donated money, and they've been very fortunate. So, in regards to Aging in Place, I've been very proactive. I had called Montclair State University. I like to, you know, thank Ross Moskowitz. I had asked her for some phone numbers. And I had called Montclair up, got some information, and they, there's been talk of Ms. Morelli advocating to do a survey, but what they did was more of a comprehensive study, which is pretty costly. It costs $10,000 to $20,000 for this comprehensive study. But there are grants out there that would be able to, we could apply for, to move forward to try to get this comprehensive study done. So, again, this is premature. There's a lot of research that needs to go into this, and hopefully, it'll be forthcoming in the future. As far as the ordinance is concerned, so I say this is in two parts. There's Aging in Place, and what are the services that we have now? In talking with the other communities and looking at the brochures, there is a lot that we offer, and there are items that we don't offer. I think the biggest problem we have here, if most of you folks remember, the Outlook that used to come home to you in the mail, it used to be delivered four times a year. The Outlook was primarily funded by the Board of Education until we couldn't... The Outlook was primarily funded by the Board of Education until we couldn't fund it any longer. And it was a great resource because not only did it promote and get the information out there about the education components in the township, but also it had a whole page of our senior services and detailed information on that. So I do feel strongly, I'm glad Councilwoman is working on the grant for the newsletter because I think that will help. I think if you are in a senior building, you do get the information. If you are not, I agree, you do not get the information. And I've had made recommendations on how to approve our township website to make sure that we could get information to all. But again, not everybody goes on the computer and we need to do a better job of expediting this newsletter. There was mention of some residents wanting help with shopping. I just want to point out to folks too, and we could get information out there to you, students at West Orange High School are available. They have to volunteer their time to the community. And there is, actually, some of them are going to be volunteering their time to the library book sale for us that we made arrangements for. And there's a coordinator up at the high school that organizes this. So if anyone is in need of any types of those services or volunteer, even if you're a homeowner and you need help maintaining, you know, you want to fall clean up with leaves, our students volunteer their time to go out in the community and to help our senior residents. And it's a great partnership that the schools have been doing for quite a few years now. So if you need more information on that, I'm going to talk to, I'm going to talk to the Board of Ed President and the Superintendent to make sure we get that out there so you know that it's happening. Anyone that serves as a commissioner on one of our commissions, I know RPR Commission realizes that all activities and functions that we do in our capacity as commissioners on these commissions, because that's what they are, they are commissions, that are commissioned by appointments from us and mainly appointments by the mayor. So it's volunteers, but you have to be appointed to these commissions. You just don't show up at a meeting. You have to be appointed by us and the mayor. If the support isn't there from the administration to have a commission, the commission will not be able to function. Now, let me go back a step if you folks understand this. So for example, on the PR Commission, that was already formulated and voted on, last year, we hosted two Realtor, two Realtor open houses, one for the residential Realtors and one for the commercial Realtors. Those activities could not happen if the mayor didn't approve those activities, okay? Now, I'm not here to throw the mayor under the bus. I would never do that to the mayor. But the mayor, and I wish Council President last week when he sat here, and I understand you, we didn't go through with first reading and I don't want to rehash that because I was understanding, we sometime discuss things and we didn't. It did not look well on television. Actually, it played out horribly. So with that being said, I'm not going to speak for the mayor, but I think somebody has already spoken with the mayor and he feels very strong that senior services are his responsibility and that, you know, he wants to, you know, continue to manage that. That doesn't mean we do not care. That does not mean we are not listening. That does not mean the mayor does not listen. He has office hours every Thursday. Now, I said I would be supportive of a commission, but the administration has to be supportive of the commission. Otherwise, the commission doesn't function the way the commission needs to function. So I hope I kind of explained my thought process on it. And again, this is a task that is an administrative function unlike the other, unlike the other commissions, folks. I know this could be confusing. But unlike the other commission, what we're talking about are administrative services that you are coming forward with us, administrative functions. So again, we will continue to make improvements. We will continue to listen as I know the administration continues to listen. So that's where I'm at with that and I really do appreciate all of you coming out and voicing your concern because I do think there is, I do think there's a great support for a commission, but I just hope you understand how it happens and how it functions. And Muriel, you are correct. It is political season here in West Orange. The three of us actually are up. And it would probably be pretty foolish of me to tell you all that I wouldn't support something that you care so much about, but at the same time, for those of you that know me, you know, I'm not going to be forced into a situation that I'm not comfortable with and something that needs, if I don't think it's going to work effectively. So I'm still going to do my due diligence. I believe in Aging in Place. I think, and again, kudos to you for all your due diligence, Mrs. Morelli. In regards, I just missed over Lori Kepnek and your beautiful children that came up here this evening. And I just want to add in on your walk to School Day that we have to commend Dr. Polaro, your principal, because she walks all the way to school from Caldwell and she'll be doing it again, I believe, this year. I don't want to speak because I haven't spoken with her yet, but I'm sure she'll be up for the walk. So folks, thank you all for coming out. This is something that's not a closed book, but I do feel that we will be making many improvements and we are listening. And if anyone wants to call me and you want to talk further, I'd be more than glad to explain any of my votes for you. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Council President, if I could, can I just sort of, please stop interrupting me. But Councilman, Council President Serrillo, I apologize. There were some statements that Councilwoman Castellino said that I don't want to argue with. I simply want to present the facts of the legislation and how our council and how our form of government work.
Well, I respect that, Councilman, but it's, we would be out of order. I still haven't given statements and unfortunately, this is not a debate. We're here to make remarks or respond to the public, not to debate issues. So we would be out of order and we have to respect the quorum.
And I only state in my opinion, not the law.
What I said was that I don't want to debate it. I simply don't want the people who are in the audience or who watch the video to think that what they just heard, some of it is factually correct because it certainly isn't.
I just ask you that you respect the quorum and allow me to speak now. It's my turn. We all spoke, so we're going to continue with the meeting. I'm sorry, this is not a debate.
I'm not asking to debate. I'm simply trying to put facts within the record.
Well, the attorney could speak to my statement if I misspoke.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to deny that, Councilman. Perhaps later on during the meeting, we have an opportunity to bring this issue back up, but for now, we're going to continue. I apologize. We would be out of order. So Ms. Sawyer is still here. We do have that list of items. I have shared that with the administration and I want to make sure that those are very technical recommendations and thank you for taking the time. It looks like, you know, that was very time-consuming and I'm sure that the professionals that have that level of expertise can look at that and make sure that the investment is being looked after and that's addressed. I wasn't under the impression that the project was completed. It was, it's still a work in progress, still not completed. We're still working on it, but I really appreciate you making that list and being so proactive. I do want to ask about Lowell Avenue and the, is it that we don't have enforcement or is it that, it's a question for the administration, is it that since the parking lot is closed, is that why people are allowed to park there in violation of the signage?
Councilman, I don't know what's going on up there. I need to send somebody up there to take a look at it, which I will do starting tomorrow. It is a kiss and go lane where people can actually pull their cars in, pick somebody up, go into the school, get your child and come back out and move your car.
They're not supposed to get out of the car.
I know that, but that's what happens, okay? So I can sit up there and issue summonses to every mother that comes in there to pick up their child. If that's what we need to do, that's what we're going to do. I will have someone up there tomorrow.
Yeah, we need to respect those regulations. I appreciate that. Thank you much. So that was the issue of the Gregory School items, the speeding. And Laura Andrew Valerie, or is Natalie, Natalie, we're trying to figure it out. Ms. Svestry, the crosswalk improvements, and as an aside, I was talking to the Councilwoman about that. So we do have a work in progress, a grant for the crosswalks. Roz is still here. I saw her back there. That's really exciting. So the intersection of, and your hard work, Laura, as well, the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock Avenue. So we're working on those crosswalks, you know, to answer Andrew's point, we're working on those crosswalks to try to slow down the activity that's going on because it's dangerous. I crossed that. The day of the Kelly School event, I crossed that and it was very scary because I went over to the Dunkin' Donuts to get a cup of coffee. So I know what you're talking about, Andrew. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. What's that?
No advertising.
Yeah, that's true. Sorry about that. The senior citizen issue is an ongoing issue. It's a work in progress. Every, we deal with so many senior issues, so let's not, let's not get that impression that we're ignoring or we're being insensitive in any way. It's just a matter of trying to figure out, you know, what's the best way to address or answer or pinpoint concerns of our senior citizens in town. Now, we, I did hear two very good, two issues that we need to follow up on and a very good point about information not being, not being spread out or marketed properly. And I know the administration, I know, is working on an initiative and I know whether it's going to be funded through the grant or through the general budget, an initiative to improve communication with our senior citizen population. My mother just became a senior this year and I understand. I know exactly what we mean when we say we want to, you know, because I can't be there all the time to disseminate and help as much as I can, as much as I love her, but it would be nice to get a publication out there. So I believe we're working on that, if I recall that correctly from our conversations with the administration, including our conversation about the fact that we didn't find the, the administration doesn't find the Senior Citizen Advisory Board to be the proper vehicle to bring input because in my opinion, and you know what, I had this discussion, it's a little bit of a slippery slope in some ways. You know, should we form a, an advisory board for the fire department? Should we form an advisory board for the police department? Should we form an advisory board for the health department? It's, it's, it's an office of the administration and it's, it really is a slippery slope. Now, it doesn't mean that those issues are not important and it doesn't mean that we cannot find the right vehicle to try to address them. I have talked to the administration about the Princeton model, which is, you know, forming a 501(c)(3). It's probably the way to go because through a 501(c)(3), we can try to bring in funds independent of the treasury. That's what Princeton did. Princeton has a very effective, and thank you, Mr. Sweetie, I see that you've looked into it, a very effective senior program. And the way they do it is through charging fees or to bringing in grants. As much as we think that an advisory board would be effective in that regard, I think we're better off possibly doing what our rec departments did in the 50s and the 60s, which is form nonprofit organizations like the PAL or the Mountain Top League to address some of the needs that we have in the community, independent of the taxpayers. Again, there's different ways of addressing the needs of a senior citizen population. I was just talking, when we got here, we were talking to senior citizens about the rents going up significantly within the last month. We're talking, Dana Roan was talking about issues pertaining to deeds and mortgages. Groceries, we're limiting the amount of bags that you can bring into a shuttle bus. That we need to follow up on. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. So again, it's an ongoing issue. It's an ongoing process. Please keep the politics out of it. This shouldn't be political. It's people, if people think it's political, it's really a shame. It's really a shame because our senior citizens are not political pawns, okay? They're not political pawns and I take that personal because I'm not here to play politics. I'm here to try to do the right thing. So please do the right thing for our senior citizens. Thank you very much for being here today.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public minutes, September 6, 2016.
Consent.
Consent.
Report of township's officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Administration would like to pull 213-16.
Council President, I don't have any.
Anybody else?
No.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Administration pulled Resolution 213-16, which is Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the New Jersey Civil Service Commission for the operation of an employee assistance program.
The resolution as put before the council is actually reversed of what the administration's intention was. If you look back last year, previous year, we, at that point in time, changed from a per employee basis to a per session basis because the frequency of the usage of the service was low. So we would suggest that the resolution as printed be amended for as the last whereas to replace per employee with per session. And then in the therefore, it is resolved, hereby resolved to change, again, the same thing, per employee to per session and then charge it 125 per session to amend the resolution to that effect and then it could be adopted.
Any questions on the amendment?
Yes. Go ahead, Counsel. Please. Okay, thank you. Are the employees still being charged the $10?
No. No, the employees were never charged for the service.
Okay.
It cost us, the other way is it cost us $10 per employee.
Okay.
And we just don't have the frequency of use. It's much more economical for us to go, and that's what we did. We made that decision last year. Somehow or another, in the formation of the resolution, I think they picked up the resolution from perhaps the year before, so.
So you want to eliminate the last line, be charged $10 per employee participates in the program and just leave the procession?
Right, be charged 125 per session.
Any other question?
I answered that one.
No. Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 213-16? So moved.
Second.
As amended.
As amended, sorry, yes.
As amended.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Serrillo?
Yes.
The motion is carried. We have ordinances on first reading, 2492-16, bond ordinance amending, bond ordinance number 2475-16, finally adopted by the Township Council on February 9, 2016. Is there a motion to introduce 24?
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilman, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Serrillo?
Yes.
Okay, and we have ordinance 2492-16, bond ordinance amending, bond ordinance number Okay, then we have ordinance 2493-16, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic subsection 7-14.3, parking time limited on certain streets during certain hours of certain days, 7-26.1, bus stops at various school locations, and subsection 7-14.9, parking prohibited adjacent to schools of the revised general ordinances of the township. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, with the hope that Lenny's here next week to talk about all of this.
He will.
Uh, next month, sorry.
Council President Cirillo?
Yes.
The motion is carried, and that concludes our agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President, if you'd like to redress, it looks like this is the time to do it.
Yeah, go ahead, you had some comments?
Yes, and I also, as you may know from, if you had a chance to look at the email back from the administration, I had just asked Mr. Sayers to be available to answer some questions about a couple of the major projects here in town.
Yeah.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask it during liaison, the council liaison reports, simply because if it was going to take long, I, I didn't want to put off why many of the people were here, which was to hear. So, I just sent him, Mr. Sayers, a list of questions, and I just wanted to perhaps go through it, just so we could get some information about where things stand with St. Mark's Project, and also with the Downtown Edison Project.
Sure.
The first question I asked was, what's the status of the repairs and rehabilitation at St. Mark's Church, including any permits, applications, and violations?
Right now, we, they re-upped their permit as of July, because they had a new, as we talked about, two meetings ago, they brought in a new engineer to do the framing up of the walls, and they're going through that process right now, and I think one of the questions you asked was about the roof, but right now, we have got no permits to do the roof, they're still doing the shoring up of the inside.
Has there been an application for the roof yet?
I don't believe so, I do not believe so. It's been taking them a lot longer than they had thought to shore up the walls, and Tom's been out there, actually, we're probably gonna be having a meeting with them sometime, either the end of this week or next week.
Okay, wow. There were some violations that were pending way back on the project, do you know what the status of those violations are?
What types of violations?
I, I thought Mr. Tracy had cited them for not, for doing electrical work without a permit, for taking down the windows, yeah, putting in, yes, yes.
If that was prior, was it that prior to the fire?
Yeah, it happened before the fire.
It was prior to the fire, I'm not sure where those are at.
Sorry.
I can find out.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any timetable, or timeline from the owner about the completion of the stabilization work?
No, actually, that's what we're gonna meet about, hopefully next week. They have run into some problems with what they needed to do, that's why they changed engineers, and we're hoping to get some type of, some type of timeline, however, technically, the permit was issued in July, so they have until July 217 to complete it, but, you know, we're, we're not gonna put, not that we're not gonna put pressure on them, but we're gonna try and get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay.
But we want it done properly, that's, that's our issue.
Thank you, I just had some questions about what's going on over at the Edison Battery Factory Project, do you have any sort of expected timeline for the completion of the installation of the new windows?
The new windows, my understanding is those windows aren't even gonna be done or put in until the facade is done, so.
Yeah.
My guess is, they're finishing up the garage, then they're gonna do the facade, you're probably looking at maybe a year from now.
Right, yeah, they're custom-made, they have to be custom-made.
Yeah.
And they go in last, they go in last usually.
But I would say it's probably, a good guess of it would be about a year.
Okay, the reason I ask is because, to a significant extent, I believe, removing the windows now subjects the interior of the building much more to the elements than they were before, and I was, I was thinking, you probably don't want to go through a winter doing that, but it sounds like that's what the, that's what the plan is?
I think that most of the inside of buildings demoed, I mean, if you want to go down there, I'll take you down there, the contract, the, I think Susan, you went down there?
Project manager?
Yeah, the project manager will take you through the building, you can look at it, it's, it's pretty, they have it pretty much secure, but the whole inside of the building is demoed.
Right, but what's, what's there is basically exposed concrete to a, to a great extent, and as you probably know, the elements working on the exterior of the building have made, have put in substantial damage, to the extent that, that there's a lot of work that has to be done on the, on the facade, just to repair it, and then to paint it the right way, so I was just curious as to time on that. Do you have any expected timeline for the completion of the garage? I saw a huge crane there today.
Actually, they just started putting walls up today, and they're telling me probably anywhere from four to six weeks.
That's a big crane they have out there.
We had some meetings with them, they said they were gonna start today, and they brought in at least, I think they did at least four or five panels today.
Yeah.
And I spoke to Mr. Terrell on Friday, and he said he thinks it's gonna be anywhere from four to six weeks before they complete the garage.
Wow.
And as soon as they complete the garage, then they start the retail space on the exterior.
Yes, they are over ours.
That is, if they can get an agreement with the Historic Preservation Commission.
That's correct.
Because that's, that's what the HPC has, has expressed concern about.
There's, I had, I had some discussions with Mr. Feeney after the meeting, and there's, there's an issue that we're trying to resolve right now, I'm not so sure how we're gonna resolve that issue, but I'm still looking into the reasons for that issue, that's the best I can tell you right now.
Okay, the, has this construction effort so far identified any unexpected delays in, in the progress, and if so, what are they?
Not, no, not really, the only delay I can tell you that they had during the summer, PSE&amp;G couldn't work for like almost four to six weeks because of the heat, and that set them back four to six weeks on some, doing certain things, but other than that, the only other issues I think that they'll have moving forward now, going into the winter, is probably the weather.
Has there been any construction-related injuries to workers or vendor personnel so far?
Not that I'm aware of.
What is the status of the environmental remediation that was still left to do until heavy construction equipment got on the site?
I know they have an LSCP that they've hired.
LSRP.
What's that?
LSRP.
LSRP, I'm sorry, LSRP, which is a licensed.
Site remediation profession.
Site remediation person. That person, whenever they pull anything out of the ground, or whenever they pull something out, that person has to come in and review it and make sure there's no environmental problems. I know that person works on-site with them, is hired by them, he's licensed by the state, and my understanding is that the only way that they're gonna resolve all the, the only time that they can resolve all the remediation is once the project is completed, but as the project's moving forward, if this, if this individual finds issues, then the state, he has to report them to the state, the state comes in, and then they have to deal with it. But as far as I know, most of the stuff that they're doing is, is, I think, more soil conservation than anything, because they're pulling everything out of the ground.
Yeah, my memory, and this is probably going back three years, PRISM had done a vast majority of the remediation.
That's correct.
And then, if I recall correctly, said there were two spots, or two potential hotspots that they could not get to until they got heavy construction equipment there.
I'm not sure if they hit those two spots, but what I do know is, I had a conversation with Mr. Terrell about it, and as I said, whenever they're pulling things out of the ground or digging up, it's mostly soil remediation, but I can find out if those hotspots are there.
If you would, because I, unless the situation has changed, there were two major potential hotspots, and we had to wait till heavy equipment got on there, because I think they had to break up some, some of the concrete.
You have a lot of heavy equipment out there now.
Yes.
That's for sure.
And Councilman, as part of the financing too, you required that Phase 1 and that Phase 2, so, but it would be interesting where they are, in as far as like the remediation process, but I'm sure that the bank is holding them to the T in terms of complying with their cleanup requirements, but I do recall a Phase 1 issue.
Yes.
You know, after it was first done.
And has there been any contamination found since, since construction has begun early this year?
Not that I'm aware of, other than the discussions I've had with Mr. Terrell regarding the environmental aspects, is like I said, was basically soil remediation, because the building is so old, when they're pulling things out, you know, it, like, one of the things he told me, that when they pulled that, they were digging, they had, there were two tanks in the ground, they never even knew where they were, so that now becomes an issue, you gotta pull the tanks out of the ground, and then you have to have soil remediation, so other than those issues, they're the only ones I'm aware of.
Okay, was there any contamination from the tanks that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, I, I think what he said to me was, they just moved, they take, when they take them out of the ground, they dig the soil up, and they remove the soil, and put the soil into the ground, but that doesn't mean somewhere down the road, something, it can't be, but that has to be inspected by the state.
The state, yeah.
The state has to inspect that stuff, so.
Right, that's great, if you could just find out about the two potential hotspots and any contamination, and just, the next council meeting, that'd be great. And then I had asked at the last council meeting about the property tax delinquency that PRISM had at 55 Lakeside, you sent me an email on Sunday, thank you very much, that said that you expected them to pay their taxes.
It's done, it's paid.
So it's paid, okay.
Yeah, actually, we made about $2,900 in interest.
Did the town actually take any action, you know, like send a letter of default or anything like that?
What we, yeah, we don't send them up, but we're, you know, I didn't get into that question when I responded to you, because what we do is, we don't do anything different with them in the beginning than we do with anybody else, we send you, everybody gets a letter at the beginning of the month that your taxes are overdue and you need to pay them, and we have almost 2,000 residential and commercial property owners right now who are delaying on their taxes, so when those notices go out, they go out to you, and then we follow up with those. So when they, I guess when they got their notice in the beginning of September, they just paid the bill, but like I said, we, we, we got about $2,900 in interest on it.
Okay, and just, just to clarify, and I don't want to debate or argue, but I just want to be clear, obviously, they are like every other delinquent property tax owner in town.
Mm-hmm.
Except that they have a contract with the township that says you've got to pay your taxes, and if you're delinquent, it becomes an event of default, do you not?
That's correct, it becomes an event of default if the town enforces that clause of the contract, what I'm telling you is, is we don't, we haven't, we won't, we have not enforced that, that part of the contract, because we felt they were gonna pay their taxes, so why default them and then have them stop working and have the whole project go out the window, we're not gonna do that, you know, as long as everything's moving, and, I mean, we're not gonna let them sit there for two years and not pay his taxes, don't get me wrong, you know, there's gonna come a point in time, if it's long enough, that we'll do what we have to do, but, you know, if it's a month or a month and a half, we're not, I mean, I can tell you, we're not gonna, we're not gonna default them.
Right, and but the, it's, it's actually a two-step process, you send them a letter, you say you gotta pay within 30 days, or then we, it becomes an event of default.
Correct, but we didn't send a default letter, these are standard letters that we send out to all property owners who are delinquent in their taxes.
Okay.
It wasn't a default letter.
This was all very helpful, and if you could just follow up on some of those things we mentioned, we can just talk about it.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Take it, Councilman, for those questions. Thank you, Mr. Sayers. Madam Clerk?
That's it, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, if, if by your leave, you could just let me comment on a couple of factual issues, having to do with what Councilwoman Castellino had said, I think it would be very helpful to the, to the people who are watching here today, most of them are gone, but who might see this on TV, that our, our municipal code specifies exactly how the situation is supposed to work in this, in this situation.
I know how the situation works, but if he's gonna respond, then I'm gonna respond back, so.
Okay, let's, you already said that earlier.
Up to you.
Sure.
You already had said, you already addressed it earlier.
Yeah, we're trying to be nice here, I, I, not.
Well, I'm fine if you're nice, I'm, I just, I just said that, there are things that were factually incorrect in what she said, and I just wanted to point them out, so that people don't go away with the wrong.
Mr. Sayers, point, point them out, did I say anything factual, Mr. Sayers, or the attorney?
I'm not even sure what you two guys are talking about right now. We're not.
Talking about what these organizations were submitted for creation of a board or commission and everything.
Okay.
As a part of the municipal code, what you can and cannot do.
Okay.
My question? What is the question, Councilman?
Well, there are, there are three points I want to make, the first one is that there was a discussion that, that what the legislation talked about, or was focused on, was administration services, there's absolutely no language and no intent in the ordinance to interfere with any administrative abilities in the administration, it is a purely advisory board, that's why it's called a senior citizens advisory board, all they are charged, all they would be charged to do is to come to the council periodically and advise the council and the administration orally on what they think the issues are, or, and would also be available to respond to questions from the council or the administration.
Okay.
But there's, there's nothing in there about administrative services, that's just not true, it's an advisory board.
That's fine, that's fine.
There are, there are two other points I want to make, and they're all in our municipal code, the first thing is that Councilwoman Castellino said that if the mayor was opposed to it, it couldn't work.
That was an opinion.
Right, but here's what factually, what is supposed to happen.
Well, we understand that, Councilman.
Well, I'm not sure everybody who's going to be hearing this at home knows that, because our code and the Faulkner Act specifically address the issue of if the council believes that there's something that's important to do.
We know how, we know how that works, Councilman, it's just, it's not.
I know how it works.
If you're gonna keep interrupting me, then yes, it's not worth it, but I, I just, it would take me maybe five minutes, probably less, Mr. Kizer is right here, he can correct me if I'm wrong.
You know, I can stand here and talk for like 10 minutes about an initiative that I care about, but I don't, I don't think that that's responsible.
That's fine, if you want to leave the record, in factually incorrect, that's fine, I've, I've tried what I can do.
You made your point as far as, you know, it's an administrative issue.
No, I have not made my point, I have not made my point, you're not letting me make my point.
Look, at the next meeting, you, you have, when we provide our remarks, you know, we have an unlimited amount of time to express our own points, so perhaps you would want to do that then.
I'll do it then.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.